Seven thirty, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order, please stand and.
Apply those only just to the like. The United States. And two million unlike for which it stands. One angel. Country having. An individual. With seventeen of Justin's friend.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the board supervisors' meeting. Before we get started, just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on YouTube. If you have any comments or questions during the open comment period, just come up to the microphone and. So everybody online can hear you because it's being held hybrid. First thing on the agenda are the minutes. The minutes of the December eleventh, twenty twenty-two meeting, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? All in favor?
Hi.
Can't hear Bill.
You can, you can, you can't hear me?
Now I can.
Okay, I'll speak up.
Motion passes. And now the January third, twenty twenty-three reorganization meeting minutes, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
A second.
Any comments or questions? From the board? Any comments or questions from the public? All in favor?
Hi.
Motion passes. Next up are the reports, the police. Lieutenant Evans.
Should I take it out or? No, okay. Okay, all right, good evening. Now, this is the report prepared by Chief Scott Alexander. For the month of December, twenty twenty-two, the Euclid Township Police Department officers documented one thousand and two entries in the police department call reporting system. During the reporting period, the officers issued sixty-two traffic citations, twenty-one written warnings, and they investigated forty-three motor vehicle crashes and they arrested sixteen individuals. Officers conducted eight motor carrier details at the waystation resulting in eight hundred and seventy-eight commercial vehicles being weighed, one of which was found to be overweight. In the details, the officers also performed fifty inspections and found numerous violations, which required two vehicles and one driver to be placed out of service. During one of the details, the officers were assisted by members of the West White Lynn Police Department. Twenty twenty-two calls for service. Year-to-date totals, twelve thousand three hundred and eighty-seven. Arrests, a hundred and seventy. Traffic citations, one thousand one hundred and eighty-nine. Written warnings, three hundred and forty. Crash investigations, three ninety-five. Trucks weighed five thousand and twenty-six. Overweight trucks, twenty-three. Inspections, two hundred and one. Trucks placed out of service, forty-six, and drivers placed out of service, ten. Narcot administration's. For the year-to-date, twenty twenty-two, will be a total of two. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Bernard's not here, so we're not gonna have the treasury report, but Public Works.
Yeah, we'll have a treasure report in February with year-end numbers. For the month of December, the daily average flow to the downtown treatment plant was approximately one million five hundred and eighty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-four gallons per day, and there were no new sewer connections to either the Dara or the Eagleview wastewater treatment plant. The township received four point three-three inches of rain for the month of December. Normal being about three point six. For your total, we ended up minus three point five-one inches below normal for the year. The Public Works Department responded to sixty-four P A one calls for the month of December. Our crews were out completing stormwater repairs on Bassett Drive, Spring Run Lane, and Brainerd Place, as well as repairing potholes on Woodland Drive, Pennyback Road, and removed two down trees on Harsh, Harshaw Drive and Marsh Creek Drive. The sewer department televised four thousand one hundred and five feet of sewer line. And crews were into salt roads on December fifteenth, December twenty-seventh, December twenty-eighth, and were in to deal with a icing issue from a water overflow on Phillips Road on December twenty-sixth. The department went through state inspections of trucks and trailers, as well as regular maintenance of vehicles in preparation for plow operations. Although at this point, it does look like we may be going through a fairly decent winter for snow. One of the things that's, it's not necessarily Public Works related that I just wanted to add real quick is the township did redesign our website that launched today, so please check it out, we think it's a much fresher page. And I also wanted to mention that the township has made a, been made aware that effective February first, Eagle's sister company, A J Blazinski, will be taking over for our waste management and trash pickup in Euclid Township. Both companies are owned by Waste Connections, and this change has been assured us to provide the best possible service for Euclid Township. We've had some issues with Eagle in the past, and we're hoping that this is a good step forward.
And the dates for the yard waste pickup aren't gonna change with A J Blazinski, as far as we know?
Nothing should change, and we are gonna follow up with them just to ensure that that is the case.
Okay, thank you. Fire marshal?
The building department for the month of December issued eighty-one permits for construction activities with twelve hundred and forty-five is the year-to-date number. A total of ninety-four inspections were conducted. Twenty-nine fire code inspections were conducted, thirty-seven use and occupancy certificates were issued, and the fire marshal responded to twenty-four incidents during working, working hours and investigated two burning complaints. That was all in addition to the numerous plan reviews that were done. As well.
Okay, and the Lionville Fire Company?
Lionville Fire Company responded to sixty-six incidents during the month of December. Forty-three being in Euclid, four in Upper Euclid, eight in West Pike Lynn, and eleven in other municipalities for a total response of six hundred and forty-three calls. Three hundred and forty-seven of those were in Euclid.
Okay, thank you. And do we have a report from Euclid ambulance?
They did actually send it over. Looks like there was a hundred and forty-five calls in Euclid for the month of December. And with a year-to-date of sixteen hundred and forty-nine. Being in Euclid, and then the total year-to-date was five thousand seventy-three between all the municipalities.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to accept the reports? So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public about the reports? And I'll take a vote, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passes. Onto business, the first item on the agenda is the Devon Drive traffic update, Scott, is there an update?
The only update I have this evening is the downtown area school district was before the planning commission at their January meeting. They're not before the board this evening, and we're expecting them to be before the board of supervisors at their February meeting.
And they won't be going back to the planning commission in the meantime. Are there any comments or questions? On the, Mr. Swimer?
Yeah. When we last read, and when they proposed the thing. But the new, new, they're trying to improve. They said that the crosswalks do not need to be upgraded extensively, they can get away with more signage. When I asked them, who has observed this area in the morning and afternoon when school begins and when school ends? No one has watched. No one has made that observation. So they're making this decision without even looking at the problem, and again, I say to you, that's particularly the one. Right at the high school entrance is extremely dangerous. Afternoon, you've got buses lined up, and they're ready to go left into the, into the school driveway. Cars are going by them on the right, and they can't see the entire crosswalk. It even gets worse when you have sun clear. So I would ask the board, who really wants them here?
Okay.
When they're pretty activated, why saw?
Okay, thank you, yeah, they'll be here in, or next month, they'll be in front of us, so we'll take that into consideration. Any other comments or questions on Devon Drive traffic? Okay, then moving on to number two under business. Our resolutions, first up, we have resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-three, appointing emergency services. Yearly.
So this is a yearly resolution that we do yearly, that's obviously what yearly means. So the fire marshal is to be Michael Holmes. Fire and rescue services will be Michael Estrelis. Ambulance services will be Wes Weber. Air ambulance service will be Penn Star. Police services will be Chief Scott Alexander, and emergency manager, management will be Michael Holmes.
Okay. Can I get a motion? To approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-three, appointing emergency services as stated by Mr. Greenlee?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions from the board?
No.
Any comments or questions from the public? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passes. Next resolution. Twenty twenty-three dash oh-four, appointing chief administrative officers for pension funds.
This is another yearly resolution that appoints the township treasurer and the manager of Euclid Township as the designated people to be the chief administrator officers for conducting business with the police and non-uniform pension.
Okay, thanks. Can I get a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-four, appointing chief administrative officers for pension funds?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? From the board, any comments or questions from the public? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passes. Next up on the resolutions, resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-five, mileage reimbursement.
So this is another yearly resolution.
Very exciting stuff.
That sets the reimbursement for mileage for employees and officials. The IRS currently permits a sixty-five point five cent per mile reimbursement, and that is what this resolution is proposing for Euclid.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion to approve the mileage reimbursement at sixty-five point five cents per mile?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions from the public? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passing. Um, next up is the stormwater ordinance, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Freed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I don't know if the, if the zoning officer has any background or the township engineer has any background on the ordinance that they want to give before we go through the exhibits?
Sure, the Euclid Township is looking to to adopt the new Act one sixty-seven Stormwater Management Ordinance as prepared by the Chester County Water Resource Authority, they had prepared a countywide model ordinance back in two thousand and thirteen, which the township adopted, and as part of the Act one sixty-seven, they were required to, to go through and update that ordinance, they have taken the previous version, made some tweaks and additions to it as mandatory language as required by the Department of Environmental Protection, and some other just minor improvements to the ordinance and some lessons learned, some corrections that they've have had from, from, from the past model, have given that to all of the municipalities within Chester County and is, are requiring us to update our ordinance. We have a minimum set of standards that were required to, to adopt, and, and then the township has gone through and, and met those minimum standards and actually have been, have, a few of the standards are more restrictive to, to help improve water quality and to improve stormwater management within the township. And currently, you have a draft in front of you that outlines our recommendations for, for adoptions of new, new ordinance.
Thank you, yeah, so we have just a few exhibits to go through as part of the hearing. Exhibit, Board exhibit one is the proposed Stormwater Management Ordinance, which is ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero one, which are the amendments to chapter two fourteen of the Euclid Township Stormwater Management Ordinance. Exhibit, Board exhibit two is the public notice. Board exhibit three is the proof of advertisement of the public notice that was dated January tenth, twenty twenty-three, that ran in the Daily Local. And exhibit B four is the certification of posting that's dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-three. So if, if the board is so inclined, make them pass a motion. Passing ordinance chap, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh-one, which are the amendments to chapter two fourteen of the Euclid Township Stormwater Management Ordinance.
Sure. I move for the adoption of Stormwater Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero one.
My second.
Are there any comments or questions about this ordinance from the board?
Just wanted to thank the staff, excuse me, for the work that they did on this ordinance, as well as working with our environmental advisory council, which I know provided some input, and I'm really excited to see this move forward with a few, a few adaptations and continue to address the stormwater issues that we have in Euclid Township. So thank you.
Are there any other comments from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Okay, I'll go ahead and take a vote, all in favor of passing ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh-one, the Stormwater Ordinance update? Say aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
I can't hear Bill.
We all aye'd.
Okay. Motion passes.
The ayes have it.
The ayes have it. Okay. That's it.
That's the end of the hearing, we can close the word, thank you.
Very exciting business. Well, now the Stormwater Ordinance is exciting. Item number four, downtown East High School preliminary final land development plan extension request.
Yes, so as it was already mentioned, the high school was in front of the planning commission in January. They did receive their recommendation for preliminary final land development approval. At this time, they're just cleaning up the plan a little bit more before they actually bring it in front of the board for your final approval. So their extension letter that I received from Justin Brewer from D L Howe requests the extension till February twenty-eighth.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve an extension request? For downtown high school east? Preliminary final land development plan?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? All in favor? Oh, Mr. Swimer, sorry.
Thank you. Mister Dan. About seven, they, the meeting last week, and some of the things that pretty important, I've asked over and over again, what reasons for the new building there, and, and I've come down and asked, I've asked, boy, I've ever, none back to me. All of it received so far, and it's just almost hearsay, they wanna have an hour of lunch, and they need new classrooms for, I don't know, be science or whatever. I didn't understand that, and while I look into this, look under this plot, I'm finding more and more, it's like, there's your group all over again, went through twenty-something years ago, well, I don't know. And they're gonna pay millions of dollars for an extension. That the school population's going down, and there is really, and it hasn't improved anywhere, you know, which school district that has a program right now is union build, I'm gonna be talking with them tomorrow. Other school districts, Shen, these mothers, we're looking into it, they dropped it. And there's so many problems with this. And adding on to a facility that twenty-two years ago was dull, didn't have enough acreage for a secondary ice sheet, and of course, they manipulated itself, and, 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 I'm hoping that this I'm wondering, has this data proved this? And do they need to do that, I can't get answers from anybody, now that you want marketing, it's not often spaces that site, and if they say, hardly wants me, it's no, no, and the why? I, I leave that, if you double the one, they, they count it, it's hard on great, perhaps, and they still have this point. You're gonna have kids late to school every day. Not exaggeration, stay by the thing, you'll see it, they go to school every day late, they're losing guidance, instructional time, and then this hour is, I, I can't imagine. These can, so they're gonna evolve. You can't, you're not gonna contain and find a way to do it, but I'm asking the noise, please, really, why? Because we need to make sure that we're not spending millions of dollars for a program that hasn't even been tested. Like people won't even know about, I haven't, it's not something that should be done, in my opinion, so. Please, the close, I don't.
Well, and they'll be here next month, and we'll definitely go over parking and traffic and safety, I would encourage.
Does that to say, we want this, or we don't want to improve it?
Depends on what it is, I mean.
Was there? Just, I need a certain interest, and why not, well, say this, unless we're in a, in a way?
It depends on exactly what you're asking about, so for instance, I mean, we're governed by our, our subdivision land development codes and our zoning codes, so if it's in the law, they can either seek a variance or a waiver, if, and, or they have to do it, and if it's not in the law, then no, we can't require it, so it's, it's, you know, it's depends on, on exactly what you're talking about and whether it's required by the ordinances.
So, before you can, the amount of power you can, don't allow this, you getting more of it. You can't repeat advocates that they are there. They can't accomplish, they need to accomplish now, not enough room. So, watch them very, very here, we both, I would put commands on, say, listen, we need a certain address. Kids are late to school every day. If you, one entrance for a high school with over a thousand kids? I mean, that doesn't resonate as being something that would be appropriate for that. So I would watch them very, very kid, but when they got up and talked about the crosswalks, I was a ball. No one's even looked. How can you say we don't need to upgrade those crosswalks to put more lights there, when they haven't even served it in the morning or in the afternoon? So, that's one of my concerns, please, well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions about the high, downtown high school east, uh, extension? Preliminary final land development plan extension?
I, I would just, uh, if, I can have a moment, I would just encourage Mr. Swimer to also bring his concerns at their school board meetings that I think are probably a more appropriate place to, to, or when I say appropriate, I mean, there, the, the school board's more empowered to make those decisions and, and about the the millions of dollars expenses and so forth, and have direct control over that, so I encourage Mr. Swimer to, to attend those meetings if he is not already, and if he has continued to do so and expresses concerns in that way, as well as to reach out to our representatives of, I think, Marjorie Miller, I, I, I think Mr. Swimer's in Marjorie Miller's area, I'm not sure about that, but, you know, encouraging encourage him to, to reach out to those members of the school board.
Thank you, but I always respond to my questions on this, they just wanna, you know, are they, are they? It's just, you know, pretty disturbing. But that's a lot of money.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions? I'm gonna go ahead and take a vote, all in favor, granting the extension.
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passes. Onto the announcements. All meetings will be held at the township building unless otherwise noted, January nineteenth, the E A C will have their reorganization and meeting here at seven P M. January twentieth, the Industrial Development Authority will have their reorganization and meeting here at nine A M. On January twenty-third, the Park and Recreation Committee reorganization and meeting will be here at seven thirty P M. On February first, the planning commission meeting will be held here at seven thirty P M. On February ninth, the historical commission meeting will be at seven thirty P M at the Cadwallader House, and on February thirteenth, the board of supervisors will be here on the regular, please schedule Monday at seven thirty P M. Now I'll open up the meeting to public questions and comments. Sure, come on up and state your name, even though I know who you are.
Okay. I'm Tony Gorkin, I live at one nineteen Landaverry Drive. And I'm here because of an event. Yeah. Of an event that occurred about a week and a half ago, some of you know I volunteer at Longwood Gardens on the Meadow Garden team, and about a week and a half ago, one of our team members collapsed in cardiac arrest.
Oh, no.
And we were, five of us, five of us volunteers plus a staff member were responsible for responding to this, and we performed CPR until the security people could get there with the A E D device, we applied and used that device, we some people performed CPR, some people went out to meet and lead in the security people and the fire, the emergency team, this was in a I don't know how many of you know Longwood, but this was in the Meadow, this was not, not out, this was way out there.
Okay.
The good news is that our teammate survived and is doing very well.
Wow.
It was kind of a scary experience for those of us. Last week, the Longwood Fire Department did a debrief with us that lasted about an hour and a half, and we learned how lucky we were. And one of the things that came out of that was the importance of making sure that our training was up to date, which for some of us, it wasn't, but it, it, things worked out fine, making sure that we were prepared, making sure that we understood where the A E D device was and how to use it, and in general, how to get through an event like that, and in a prepared and a calm and a totally focused manner. I was impressed with the team, I mean, I know myself, I was focused, but the whole team was just on it, and that man survived because of us. So on the way home from the debrief, I stopped at Euclid Ambulance because we talked about having just refreshers of our training. And I spoke with Beth McCall, who was their new training coordinator, and asked her about training. It's so happens that February is heart month. So it's, it's kind of coming together, she has set up and explained to her, because some other groups I'm involved in are heavily involved with elderly people who are at risk for just this kind of an event. So she has established two dates in February, the seventh and the twenty-first for training, it's called hands-only CPR, it was interesting to learn with my extremely many-years-old training, they don't necessarily do breathing anymore, it's hands-only. That training, that's going to be held on February seventh and the twenty-first at six P M at Euclid Ambulance. It's free, but donations are welcome to Aiden's Heart, which is an organization that was founded to promote just this kind of preparedness because of the heart attack of an eight-year-old. So I'm here to ask the board to help me promote to the community this train, these training sessions, to make sure that they help me tell people to sign up for it, because if we don't tell them, they're not gonna hold them. And just encourage all of the people around us, especially the younger folks that might have to take care of us.
Yeah.
How important it is to be calm, prepared, respond instantly without hesitation, and to carry it through. So I'm asking for that support. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, Tony, for sharing that story, and CPR, Duffin, I'm, I'm glad that your friend and your coworker is doing all right, very glad to hear that. And congratulations to your team for.
The statistics are one to three out of ten survive in a circumstance like that. I have to say that Longwood was totally equipped and prepared, um both inside Longwood Gardens and whatever, but we need to be as prepared as well. And the other question I had raised was, do we have, like, I think there's some answers to this. Do we have an A E D device that's available to the public and where is it and should we know? Because that's gonna be a crucial piece of information. We did what we knew for CPR, but that device talked us through the rest of it.
Okay. Yeah, do we have?
So
One here in the meeting.
We do. There's actually one in the the vestibule here.
Okay.
Going out the building. Um as far as publicly accessible, there is one at Wyandotte Park as well. And this has started an internal conversation of other areas where they should be.
Okay. Um, yeah, thank you. Does CPR definitely saves lives, as do the um A E Ds, so um we will happily promote. We can share the Euclid Ambulance um company's CPR.
Please reach out and and encourage people, reach out to them and sign up.
Yeah.
I don't know how you know, we don't tell them we're coming. These sessions, I plan to go. Um Alexa Manning is gonna go with me. We're gonna go on the seventh.
Great. Well, thank you.
So we got two E A and E A C members go.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tony.
Are there any other comments from the public? Anything? Nope. Then I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Meetings over.
Thanks.